Good morning. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Budget CIP Overview Work Session on Thursday, May 7, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. In-person attendance is suspended for this meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is being held through technological means. A public participation in the meeting includes viewing the meeting live on Channel 4, viewing the live at LHC.gov/TV, or calling into a teleconference line by dialing 1-888-240-2560 with meeting ID 938418435. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll now have the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenny Coke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Lynn. Councilmember Donna McCoy.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Dolan.
Present by technological means.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here, thank you.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Aquoram is present.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens can address the city council on any matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. For this meeting, we asked the public to be able to email any comments to cityclerk@LHCaz.gov at least one hour prior to the meeting, and we would have the comments read into the record. This morning, we do not have any calls to the public. We will now move on to Item 5, which is the Budget Overview. It's Presentation, Discussion, and Potential Direction to Staff on the Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-20, Year End Estimates, Fiscal Year 2020-21 Annual Budget, and the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Knutson.
All right, good morning. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, and all those in attendance. Today is our first of, first budget work session. So we have another budget work session that's set to take place for the operational budget in two weeks, and then we have the ability to call a third work session if Council needs more time to look at the budget and see the, see, provide input and allow the public to provide input. So Jill will lead us in a presentation here shortly. You'll see throughout that presentation, we'll start with looking at the financial health of the, in the history of the city's finances over the last couple of years. We'll take a look at what are some of our projections are for the next fiscal year. So we're dealing with some, a lot of unknowns. You're going to see that, that when we touch on a few things, there's going to be a projections of up to a 20% decrease in the revenues that are coming towards the city. We're dealing with uncertain times, and it's important for us to put together a budget that's going to allow us for a number of different, different scenarios. So if, if the economy for some reason goes down a bad path or pandemic for some reason increases, we're prepared for those, those types of cuts within, within the budget, and you'll see, you'll see some of those ideas presented today to a certain degree, and we'll see a whole lot more of what those projections look like in terms of actual operational impacts at the next budget work session. But we're also prepared through this budget process for the reopening of the economy and a vibrant, vibrant local economy with successes with our local businesses. So it's important for us as we put together a budget, which in essence is a 12-month plan of how the city plans to, to spend dollars to provide city services to the, to the community, our place, or fire, roads, or parks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We will, some, we'll talk about a little bit more in two weeks, but part of those, some of those scenarios are identifying what we're calling here as Plan B projects. So the funding for a certain number of projects would be designated for January 1st. That would allow city staff and city council to, to collect some data over the next several months and maybe revisit the budget in the October-November timeframe, and then make some decisions on what Plan B projects at that point could be funded, if any could be funded, or at that, at that point, if we're going to have to have conversations in terms of cuts to city services or otherwise. So again, the spectrum of possibilities are all contained within this budget, and they're large from, it's just, it's a wide, wide span. So we want to be, as a city, prepared to, to deal with any scenario that comes our way over the next 12 months, dealing with this 12-month plan. After that, that budget is adopted by, by council, we will be submitting a number to, a number to the state of Arizona. Throughout that process, every city in town does this, and the number that we submit, which is the large top, the top number of the overall budget, gets submitted to the state, and at that point, throughout the, the next 12 months, throughout that fiscal year, the city cannot spend more dollars than, than is identified in that, in that budget document. So if things uptick, and we, and we have a lot of good news, and the economy is roaring, and we can put some of the, the worries tied to COVID-19 behind us, then we're prepared to, to, to move forward in a positive direction like we have in, in previous years. So again, all different scenarios are being looked at throughout this, this budget process. But we have to put together that number to the state to ensure that if things go, go well, that we're in a good position to continue with the city's services. After the budget is adopted by council, then throughout that process, council, staff, now our job kicks in in terms of how do we manage that budget? Just because something isn't a budget does not mean that those dollars are spent. So as we collect more data, as more information comes, and as we have a discerning eye towards how we spend public dollars, those decisions will be made after July 1st, after the budget is, is passed. Again, the budget is a planning document and allows us to start that process July 1st, and then at that point, we start managing the budget and putting, putting in good, good, good measures. So today's presentation talked about some of the financial health and some of the projections, but the, the goal of today's meeting is, is a concentration on the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan. So these are one-time dollars that the city collects, and that are then used for one-time, one-time projects. So we have some enterprise funds, some general government funds, and we'll do our best to try to explain the difference between a general fund and enterprise fund as we go through this process as well, too. I would encourage Council to engage staff, engage Jill, myself, and, and the experts in, in the room, if you will, with any questions or concerns that you have. And so looking forward to a, a good back and forth throughout this, throughout this meeting today. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Jill Olson, who is our Admin Services Director.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I will try and share my screen. See if I can get the presentation to begin. There we go. Can everyone see the presentation screen? I'm hoping.
Looks good.
Good, because I can't see people anymore. So as Mr. Knutson mentioned, today's primary focus will be the review of the CIP. We're also just briefly going to walk through and take a look at what the, but what is entailed in the budget process and the materials that you've been provided. We'll look, take a quick look at how we ended the fiscal year ending June 30, 19, and what we are estimating for June 30, 2020. Estimated 19 and 20 available resources will be reviewed, available resources. You can think of that as the fund balances. Then we'll take a, a quick look at the assumptions that staff has been, at least preliminarily, using in forecasting for fiscal year 2021, and we'll look at revenues and expenditures. And then we will move into the CIP or Capital Improvement Plan portion of the presentation, at which time Greg Frostley, the Public Works Director, will complete that presentation and the details associated with the CIP. The budget process, as many of you know now, but for the public's information, it is about a 10-month timeline governed by policy and partially by state law. We start early in September with the CIP, start working on the operating projections in December. The council retreat that we have, or work session that we had in February of 2020 this year, we tried to include any information that the council talked to us about at that time, so that we know what they're expecting to see in the budget. We, internally, staff starts reviewing the department's budgets individually, and then we meet and discuss each department's budget with their directors, this is with the city manager's office. And then we're required to adopt an annual budget per state law. Today's budget material is the CIP Budget Book, Budget Book that everyone should have received. It goes through the detailed project sheets and also has project and, and funding summaries included. For the operating budget book, those will be distributed prior to the work session on May 21st. We'll try to get those out to you at the end of the week prior to that. And that will include financial projections at that time, and will highlight any revenue and expenditure items and anything pertinent at a departmental level. So we'll first take a look briefly at how we ended fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. This is just a quick snapshot of budgeted versus actual. So for the general fund, you'll see that actual revenues of $56.4 million exceeded the actual expenditures of $52.9. And then we've included the list of some of the other funds, including those enterprise funds for airport refuse, wastewater, and water. Those are enterprise funds are, are funds that are treated more like a business and whose funding is primarily dependent upon user fees. So you'll see there that overall, if you take a look at the grand total of actual revenues, actual revenues exceeded actual expenses by approximately $11 million. This reflects the budget and what's being estimated for revenues expenditures for the current fiscal year. So we've reviewed what we estimate each of these items to be at June 30, 20. In the general fund, revenues are reflecting losses projected during the last quarter. So we did try to estimate what we will lose during April, May, and June and reflect that in our totals. We continue to monitor those revenues and expenditures, so that these numbers may change as we receive additional information. They could very well likely change. It will just depend on what, what we're able to actually see and understand as we go through this process. It's very important to note that the projections are only speculation at this point. The full impact of the pandemic remains unknown, since this is truly an unprecedented scenario. For the enterprise funds, the expense over the revenue total is generally due to carryforwards for projects that weren't completed in one fiscal year and had to carry over into the, the next fiscal year. Not necessarily due to, well, it's not necess, it's not due to over expenditures. This table reflects the staff estimates for revenues and expenditures for the current year and the effects on fund balances or available resources. For the general fund, the loss of revenue in the last quarter again is reflected. Therefore, the expenditures estimated to, are now estimated to exceed the revenues by approximately $1.5 million. So should our revenue projections follow what we've included and estimated here, we will be probably using a little bit of fund balance in order to balance at June 30, 20. Again, due to the carryforwards in the enterprise funds, the overall total expenses in all the funds anticipated are anticipated to exceed the revenues by approximately $3 million. And just as a side note, the budget stabilization reserve for any applicable funds has been excluded from available resources. So what you see as available resources here in that far-right column for June 30, 20, in addition to that dollar amount, there are budget stabilization reserve amounts. For example, the general fund right now has a stabilization reserve amount estimated at $8.9 million. So nearly $9 million in addition to the $25 million estimated at June 30, 20. We'll now take a look at some of the assumptions that are being considered as we estimate for the next fiscal year. We'll start by taking a look at the revenues. Again, we're still reviewing projections for revenues expenditures, anticipating the cost savings as we closely monitor all those expenses. Revenue reductions, particularly in sales taxes, are being factored in as we receive additional information. Unfortunately, there is a lag in the reporting of sales taxes, so we're not able to capture those as quickly as we would like in order to react in a more timely manner, but we will monitor them as closely as possible by doing daily monitoring of the revenues we're receiving in the sales tax area. And then we will adjust expenditures as needed. No funds are yet included as estimated to be received from the federal or state government for any coverage of losses. So we may, if, if we find that there are going to be additional revenues in the form of being reimbursed for lost revenues or costs or, you know, expenditures that we incur related to the pandemic, we may be able to then increase our, our revenue estimates should we receive information that shows we will be getting reimbursements. So projected revenues. The revenue estimates, again, are based on existing trends, including the pandemic impacts, any economic forecasts that we're monitoring, and any potential realized legislative changes. The budget will remain flexible as we adjust to the actual impacts on our finances. Revenues will fluctuate over the 12-month fiscal year, so we will be constantly monitoring those revenues and expenditures. So if revenue impacts appear to be less than we anticipated, we can adjust accordingly. The revenue estimates include no proposed increases to taxes or fees. We are still recommending that we leave the primary property tax rate at the same amount, the .6718 for $100 assessed valuation, and that would generate approximately $315,000. In addition, we have included an additional $10 million for grants in the, on the revenue and expenditure side. This gives us a bit of a cushion. Should the revenues come in higher than predicted, just as described by Mr. Knutson, we need to have that cushion in there, so that if we do exceed our revenue projections, we will have the ability to spend those additional revenues. Some additional revenues other than sales tax, but, but related to sales tax that we will see the primary decreases in are the state share revenues. We've updated those based upon our, at least our initial estimates. Right now, the auto lieu tax and state sales tax are showing about a, or in our estimates are going to have about a 20% decrease. Income tax revenues have more of a lag or a delay, so we're showing only a 4% decrease for FY 2021. Utility revenues, we have decreased the revenues primarily by increasing what we think we may incur as additional bad debt expenses as a result of the impact on our, on our citizens in our community. HIRF is, or the Highway User, Highway User Revenue Fund is predicted to have a similar loss as sales taxes, so 20%. That's annualized 20% over the fiscal year 1920 estimate. As requested at Council's major workshop, staff has been reviewing various revenue options for consideration. Again, this year, there was one category for which tax seemed appropriate for consideration. Lake Havasu City is one of only three cities. Last year at this time, we were one of five cities. This year, now we are one of three cities in the state of Arizona that does not have a commercial lease tax. So that would be a, a tax on any commercial leases in the city. It could be rental for the building from rental by a business to a landlord of the building that operates their business. It would include storage units as well. 85% of the cities have between a 1% and a 3% tax rate. So staff is, you know, recommending probably a 3% to 4% tax rate, depending on what, you know, council is, is comfortable with. But we have estimated at least kind of some rough numbers that every 1% of commercial lease tax that we assess, we believe we would generate approximately $250,000 to $300,000. So for each of the, each 1%, so a 3% commercial lease tax, we're estimating would generate $750,000 to $1 million. There are other revenue categories that we will present at the Council's next workshop in a couple of weeks, just so that you have that additional information.
Jill, Mr. Mayor, if I can. I did want to point out to that, the conversation as far as the commercial lease tax, it was information that we want to provide to the public and to the, to the council, but obviously is, now is not the time for us to move forward with a commercial lease tax in this, at the beginning of this budget year. So the staff recommendation or what we're, we're considering for council consideration is the introduction of a commercial lease tax, but we'd want to afford a significant amount of time to have a better understanding of where the financial well-being and health of our small businesses are in the community. So if this is something that would be presented to council, it would be for the, for this next fiscal year, but towards the end of the fiscal year, it may be on like the, the May or June timeframe, is some of the conversations that we're having right now. Some, again, so there's, there's going to be a pattern here. So we need some time to go by to figure out where we're at with the health of our economy, the health of the, the city, and the, and the health of our, 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 our small businesses within, within our community. So, so that's some of the thoughts there, too. So it's not something that staff's going to be recommending for July 1st implementation. Now is not the time. Our small businesses need relief. And so this, this would allow us some time to, to reconsider at a later date in that May or June timeframe. Thank you, Jill.
Yeah, thank you. That was my next sentence, so thank you very much for covering that.
I'm good at that.
On the expenditure side, once we understand the total funds available for us in providing services, we look to our existing service levels and direct us by council to more properly estimate our expenditures. We'll walk through just some of the major variances and assumptions regarding our expenditure estimates that we're having preliminarily, at least for FY 2021. In 1920, this fiscal year, at the end of March, we have, we did implement some cost-saving measures. We're just looking closely at all of our expenditures to make sure that everything that's being spent is critical and, you know, relative to our core services that we provide as a city. We eliminated any unnecessary travel, and we did implement a hiring freeze for non-public safety or sworn employees. So overall, for 2021, at least preliminarily, our numbers are reflecting very nominal increases for salaries and wages just due to what we currently have as step increases. So as evaluations are given to employees, if they receive a raise based upon their performance, then we have included a small amount in the budget for that, as about 2% on the average. It reflects an increase to the retirement rates and an increase in health insurance of 2.5%. The Plan B items, as Mr. Knutson mentioned earlier, those are items that we have included but are not authorized for expenditure until after the mid-year financial review. Currently, the Plan B items total about $5.1 million, $2.3 million of which is in the general fund. The estimated savings in salaries overall, just through natural attrition that we typically incur every year at a minimum, is about $500,000 in the general fund, and that has been included in our estimation so far. This concludes the general overview portion of the presentation. So Greg Frostley will take the presentation from here to what CIP that is proposed, and I'll continue to the, to advance the slides, and hopefully I will do it in a manner that doesn't make his job more difficult, right?
Yes, very well rehearsed, right, Jill?
That's right.
Thank you for the introduction, Jill, and Mayor and members of council, good morning. As Jill just mentioned, this is the projects portion of the presentation, and we do have a, a lot of projects, which translates to a lot of slides. So if, you know, feel free to chime in if you have any questions. I'm going to go over each project, focused mainly on what is being proposed for year number one, which is fiscal year 2021. The remaining slides are going to include an overview of what we're doing in our current year and the projects that are currently underway. You've got a slide that discusses available funding, another one that discusses some funding sources, and then we'll, we'll hit the overview of the entire five-year capital improvement program. Okay, this is a, this is sheet one or page one of two. It lists all the projects that the council approved about this time last year for current fiscal year, current, for the next two months anyways. And while you look over that list, I thought I'd take the opportunity to remind you of some of the things that happened over the last 10 months or so. And that when I was transferred to Public Works in July, that coincided with the city losing a long-term employee who happened to be our Capital Improvement Program Manager. So that was unfortunate. And at that same time, when I got to Public Works, we were down two very critical managerial positions over water and wastewater. So we had some challenges right off the bat. In, in, as recent as February, I was before council letting you know I had a concern with the CIP schedule maybe slipping a little bit, and I asked the council to amend an engineering contract for some part-time help with staff augmentation. And you heard my pleas, thank goodness, and approved that contract, and I got a local engineering firm under contract on a part-time basis, 20 hours a week, to manage the CIP for me. And, and the individual's name is Sean Perotto, and he's done a great job. One of the first things he and I did, once he came on board, is take a look at this list and evaluate it from a perspective of what, what projects haven't started yet, what projects need to move forward, and maybe what, what projects can be moved forward to future years or maybe taken off for now, based on what's a critical function for infrastructure and what might be more of a want than a need. Jill, if you go to the next page, you see the project's total as approved, $21 million, just over $21 million. But through that evaluation, we were able to remove just over $5 million worth of projects that we didn't feel were, were core critical and could be pushed off into, into future years. Some examples of those are, is the very top one, the Bombay Lift Station rag removal. That's a big-ticket item. It would have required maintenance, but at the, at the same time, last year, we also purchased two brand-new Vector trucks. So rather than installing equipment, we revised and made our wet well cleaning schedule more robust, and we haven't had a, a real rag problem, you know, up until recently, when everybody's using an abundance of them, and, and we've got a temporary issue with that. But that project was, was canceled. Some good news with water conservation and reuse, that was a $1.5 million package that was approved. But once we got into the design and realized some of the complex hydraulics to connect many of our parks to effluent, we, we reduced that scope and, and awarded a, a project that's currently in construction to connect only London Bridge Beach, which helps us with some effluent disposal at the island, and also is a green project where we can irrigate that, that park with, with effluent. And also is a green project where we can irrigate that that park with with affluent. The second rainy well site, we were able to absorb that drilling on state parks. That was an exploratory well drilling for a future horizontal collector well. That project, the exploratory well drilling part, was absorbed into a current project that we're doing with our backup water supply in the North Well Field. So we didn't have to spend that money either. In the pipeline across State Highway in the Wapa Water Main, those two areas are planned for improvements to bolster the the volume and pressures in certain areas of town. However, currently, they are functioning within within our standard parameters. So those those projects we identified as possibly more of a want than a need, and we can do those in future years. So those those projects were also pushed. So we 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 managed to remove five million, so the the current CIP is actually closer to sixteen million rather than fifteen million. Next slide. Some of the available funding. As was last year, this year is balanced and funded. Same as last year, again, the general fund, the general fund contribution to the CIP is is a dedicated funding source, and it's really the the construction sales tax, which generates about two million dollars per year. So that that is the general fund contribution to the CIP last year, this year, and future years going forward. The CIP has presented today, over all five years, and overall funding sources total is just over seventy-six million dollars. And at this time, based on current projections, we're able to fund that without issuing any debt. There's another way of looking at the different funding sources and their contribution. Typically, the ADD and wastewater funds are our biggest fund. You can see the grants area is rather large this year. It's really due to potential grants available at the airport, and we are planning on doing approximately fifteen million dollars over the next few years of repaving taxiways and runways at the airport. So that's that's larger than you would typically see it. The general fund contribution is also larger than you typically see it, and that's mainly because we have funding programmed for three years and the next five years to design and construct a new courthouse. Okay. Let's get into the projects portion. What you're looking at here is a general overview of basically that bar chart you just looked at. These are the dollar amounts in each of the categories. Like I mentioned, water and wastewater utility are typically the largest. Airport is unusually large. The drainage is is really our annual allocation of flood control funds from the Mojave County Flood Control District. They give us back two to two-point million dollars every year to perform our our watch maintenance program. The next slide is a list of all the projects proposed for fiscal year twenty twenty one by category. It's it's a breakdown of the pie chart you just looked at. Again, this is slide one of two. And as you look this over, I wanted to let you know what we've done just recently to the proposed CIP. This CIP looks much different than the one that was submitted several months ago. And in light of the information that Jill just presented, I I think one of the slides said significant decrease in revenue. So we had to take a more conservative approach, especially in in water and wastewater. And basically, what I did with water and wastewater is just eliminated years four and five of this five-year CIP and pushed them off off the chart for future years, and took the projects that we programmed for years one through three and spread those out through the five years. So what you're going to see in water and wastewater, and if you go to the next slide, is basically for four years, one and two, we're not proposing any new projects. We've got a lot of projects that are currently millions of dollars worth of projects that are currently in one some stage or various stages of designer construction. So we're focused on projects currently under contract, no, with the exception of one or two projects in your in years one and two. No new projects happen until years three, four, and five for the water and wastewater. And I've got individual sheets by category following this that we can go through the projects in a little more detail. And I think these are alphabetical. So yes, we'll start with the airport. We've got a lot of projects planned in the airport this year. As you know, all the projects at the airport are grant-funded. Our match varies depending on who's participating, what the grant requirements are, but typically, it's it's either four point five percent or at maximum seven percent. So it's a really good deal. Some of these project titles may be slightly misleading simply because ADOT has to select certain titles for projects to make them eligible for the for the grants. Rehabilitation reconstruct reconstruct taxiway is really off the taxiway. It's a soil cement erosion control project to keep rocks and debris from getting on on the runway. That project's currently under design. We're looking to do do the construction on that in the year one fiscal year twenty twenty one. The the next project, we're we'll start designing next year. That's really, the airport has obstruction-free zones. Our obstruction obstruction-free zone actually has several fire hydrants. They do make a flush mounted fire hydrant that goes in in the pavement. So this project is really removing a bunch of fire hydrants and replacing them with flush mount with gets us in compliance with the FAA and their obstruction-free zones. The big project that we have coming up is repaving taxiway Alpha. The project price tag on that right now is eight point six million dollars. And again, a big bang for a buck. We're only going to be responsible for seven percent of that. Future years, we've got some equipment and signage replacement, and also, starting in twenty-one, twenty-two year two, we're looking at a grant to repave the entire runway. If there's no questions on that, we can move on to drain it. Again, the funding source for this is our annual allocation of flood control funds from Mojave County Flood Control District. The first project on this list is a low-impact development master plan. That is a grant effort. It's actually a two hundred fifty thousand dollar project in partnership with the Flood Control District. It gets us updated mapping, flood control mapping, which we need some of our new developments around town are even included in our current mapping right now. Low development is really low impact development, I'm sorry, is really a planning and design approach to manage stormwater runoff. And from a conservation perspective, try to use onsite features and native species plants and things like that. So that master plan would be available to the public. We'd be making pamphlets to hand out to developers to help them in the design process. And again, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The sixty-two five you see on the list there is simply our matching funds. Have a soup by wash three. The rest of these projects are really pulled straight from our drainage master plan that identified wash reaches that were eroding. A lot of times, they have potentially impacted private property and need attention. Have a soup by wash three is actually in our current CIP, we postponed it a year simply because we applied for another grant through FEMA for one point six million dollars. And the that's all been delayed. So we haven't heard yet. We're hoping we've got all indications, I guess, that we're we're going to be approved for that grant, which would fund about half of this construction project. So we moved this project from our current year to year one fiscal year twenty twenty one. And then Avalon Drain Two is currently under construction. We'll be finishing that up here in the next month or two, and then it goes to the Army Corps of Engineer for approximately nine months for their review, and hopefully they'll issue a permit. So we're going to put put those construction plans on the shelf and bring it back in in year three, which is twenty-two, twenty-three for construction. And then the other two projects are routine wash annual wash maintenance program projects. General government, there's actually no proposed projects in year one for for general government. You can see the downtown catalyst project. I'm not, we've got that programmed in year in year two, I guess, for two million dollars, which is a million dollars from the ABC competition. We expect proceeds for any sale of property for that project to equal five hundred fifty thousand, and then the general fund's going to kick in four hundred fifty thousand for that project. Like I said, it's in currently in year in year two. The new municipal courthouse is spread out over three years. We anticipate the design, construction management, and construction costs to be about seven point five million dollars. We start that design process with seven hundred thousand as proposed in year two fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and then four point eight million dollars in year three and two million dollars to finish out the construction in year four.
Hey, Greg, if I can, for a quick second. So based on the conversations that council that we had at the February retreat earlier this year, this was the right now, if you look at the existing CIP budget, there's a project in there called the ELC slash downtown catalyst project. And I believe it's, I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe it was funded at three point two million dollars. With two point six-ish of those dollars would be coming from the city's general fund. What you see here is a result of the conversations we had back in February with council. So you see a downtown catalyst project. You don't see the ELC title of this project. And that funding that you see for the two million dollars, as Greg indicated, a million of that two million dollars comes from the ABC competition that's currently being held by the ED. Five hundred fifty thousand dollars of that two million, two million dollars comes if the the city plans to sell about a third or so of that that property. And sorry, we're for the public's benefit. We're talking about the property on the intersection of McCollough and Curio in the in the downtown area that the city bought for a million dollars a few years back. So what you see here is the downtown catalyst project for two million dollars. Four hundred fifty thousand of those dollars of the two million dollars right now is identified for the for the general fund or a cost to the city. The remaining one point five five million dollars is for is for, you know, either the ABC competition dollars or proceeds from the sale of property. So just want to explain that because that's different. The council and the public haven't seen that until just now. Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, thank you, Jess, for that clarification. The next slide has our parts projects. I think we all remember the council meeting when we awarded a design contract. The house was packed with pickleball enthusiasts. That design is done right now, and it's under review, the final design. We anticipate going to bid as soon as July first. You see on the on the page there, we had budgeted seven hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. The the design contract was forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty. So the remaining is being carried to fiscal year twenty twenty one for construction. And we're going to, we're going to add more courts to the Dick Samp Pickleball Sports Complex out there. The other project we have programmed is two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for some work at the Aquatic Center. Back in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, we did a facility assessment on the entire Aquatic Center building. And one of the things that it identified as an immediate need was dehumidified dehumidification units for the pool area and some improvements with the HVAC in the locker rooms and the the chemical and and mechanical room. So that two point two five million is spread out over two years. The first year is going to be, I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand for a design of those improvements. In the following year will be the implementation of that design or the construction for those improvements at the Aquatic Center. Public safety. The police facility, we're all familiar with the PD. That building was built in nineteen ninety-four, and it's twenty-six years old. And it's starting to show its age a little bit. We're experiencing some issues with the electrical plumbing, the HVAC. We have some roof leaks that we we need to attend to. So in twenty twenty-one, we've got twenty-two thousand dollars programmed to do a building needs assessment. That report will give us the information we need to program repairs and upgrades, improvements to the police facility. So you probably see those projects added to the CIP next year, the year after, depending on what that report says. The police station also has an underground fuel tank that is very old, more than twenty years old, and it's very difficult and expensive to insure. This project is actually at the request of our risk management division simply because it's 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 hard to to get insurance on it. So that project's got two hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars programmed for year one. We've just got, again, about twenty thousand to do an assessment. We have to know if 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 we'll be able to remove that tank or if we have to abandon it in a place. So that money will get us an assessment and some permitting fees. And the following year will be the abandonment of that tank and the construction of an above-ground thing similar to the one you see in the picture. The other, in future years, we've got in twenty-one, twenty-two, we've got the police indoor range rehabilitation. The the firing range at the PD has been out of service for many years. It's got some serious ventilation issues and HVAC issues. So this project in year two is an upgrade to that facility so they can put that back into service. And Fire Station Five rebuild is out in year five. I think that's basically a placeholder that's been talked about for a long time. That's the original fire station. It needs a lot of improvements. We've got a new fire chief that's going to take some time to evaluate that whole situation with regards to station location and those kind of things. And there may be a different recommendation other than to rebuild that one. But we've got that program because we've identified that as a big projects. We've only got three street projects scheduled. Two of them are part of the MPO. The MPO is managing those in conjunction with the city, and they're both fully, they're both grant-funded. The first one on the list is the Hawk Light. The Hawk is a high-intensity, high-intensity actuated crosswalk beacon. Somebody came up with the acronym Hawk from that. We just have to accept that. It's it's it is it's a light. It's a pedestrian safety light, similar to what you see in the picture. It's got a push button that that stops traffic. This one is proposed for the intersection of a coma in Pima. Like I mentioned, it's one hundred percent grant-funded through the MPO and ADOT with the Highway Safety Improvement Program Funds. The design is nearly complete, but there's some very long lead items that need to be manufactured, so we don't actually anticipate construction to begin until September. The the other MPO project is the traffic signal. The traffic signal, again, is is a hundred percent grant-funded. It's an ADOT project. ADOT determined that the inner our intersection of Swanson Avenue in a coma near the ASU campus needs to have a traffic signal. So they started down the road of planning that and budgeting for that, and the the scope was growing quite large, and it got very expensive. Right now, it's in our budget for two million dollars, which in my mind is a very expensive traffic signal. So what the MPO did is is went out, solicited statements of qualifications for engineers, and they're doing a small project with with green light traffic engineering to take a look at the intersection to develop a better defined scope. It is a rather tight intersection. There's zero building setback. There's not a lot of room for for pole bases and things like that. So rather than just putting enormous amount of money to cover potential costs, the MPO went down the road of hiring an engineer to do a better evaluation, and that's underway right now. I'm told that is about a ten to twelve-week evaluation. I'm told that is about a 10 to 12 week evaluation. We still have money programmed in fiscal year 2021 to move forward with that project. Depending on the outcome of what ADOT and the MPO can do. The third project listed for streets is paving on McCullough Boulevard between Smoke Tree and a coma. I think it's been at least five years now where I was before council letting you know the pavement has failed. And we should probably take a look at what we want our downtown to look like if we're going to replace that pavement. And the result of that was about a $30 million project. So that, that is no longer in our CIP, but guess what? The pavement is still failed to the point where we can't even maintain it anymore. So what I was proposing is 1.2 million dollars. It got placed in plan B to make sure that the revenues are going to be there to, to fund that with her funding. But it's really, i- i- instead of a big grandiose project with sidewalks and landscaping and benches. This is a mill and fill, it's almost maintenance. It's removing four inches of the existing pavement and, and paving it back. Similar to what we just did at the intersection of Swanson and Smoke Tree. And that should buy us easily seven to 10 years to decide what we're going to do with downtown. But right now this project is proposed because that pavement is literally shot. There's not much we can do with it anymore. So those are our street projects. And earlier in the presentation, I mentioned water and wastewater are typically the, the biggest categories. This is the list for wastewater. And if you look at everything proposed for 2021. That's the first six line items that equals 7.9 million dollars. In the entire five year CIP is only 11.2 at this point. So as much as we tried to pare down the CIP with all of these projects under construction currently. It's still a, a high dollar amount. And like I said, with the exception of the wastewater master plan. All of these projects listed above that are currently under construction. So in matter of fact, I, a lot of those are just recently have been to council to ask award for the construction project. I'm happy to go through those if you like. And then the remaining projects are either a result of intensive maintenance that needs to be addressed or through our asset management program. It tells us what, what projects need to be programmed for replacement or improvements. I don't know if anybody has any questions on wastewater, but the, the last slide I have is our water project. And it's a similar situation. There's only four projects listed. But there's $22 million worth of projects listed. The top one, the exploratory well drilling is, is underway right now. The 4.9 million program for next year is really phase two of the existing project. We're out in the field right now doing some exploratory well drilling. We've, we've drilled five out of, I'm sorry, four out of the five exploratory boreholes already. So the, the, the contract we have with Jacobs, they're going to take all the information back and extrapolate the data and project some potential yields at these sites and make recommendations for where we should go back and develop wells. And phase two, the 4.9 million dollars is going to be the design contract for, for developing those wells, constructing the wells, constructing the pipeline to the plant. And, and everything else that goes with that to, to bolster our backup water supply. So we can do some long deserved maintenance on our horizontal collector well. I anticipate being in front of council in July with the amendment to their existing contract for that, for this work associated with the $4 million. Water main replacements. One of the things we skipped this current year is the design of our 2021 water main replacement program. Just because it was so late in the year, we hadn't started it. So we skipped a year. So we're going to pick up design again in year two. We're going to finish out our construction project that we have going on right now. Catch up a little bit with that program and start it up again in, in fiscal year 21, 22. And then that $3 million is design construction, design construction through the end of our five year CIP. We've got some treatment plan improvements related to safety and efficiencies that we have programmed out in, in future years in our five year CIP. And the tank and booster station, we've got, right now we've got three tanks in various stages of designer construction. We've got two that are out of service right now. So we're really, the prior years is finishing up those projects through years one and year two. Year three, 23, 24 is when we have, we're going to resume our annual tank and booster station replacement program. These tanks and pumps are sometimes 40 years old. And we've got a recent up master plan that identifies priority. So we're, we're going to take the next two years to finish up our existing projects and then restart the, the program with some new projects. So Mr. Mayor, I know I threw quite a bit of information at you. I didn't hear any crickets, but I didn't hear anything else either. So I know Jill's still on the line and her and I are both happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the CIP.
Yes, thank you for, for the presentation. A, a couple of pieces of clarification. Ms. Olson, in, in your report, you talked about the increase for some retirement rates. That's just the rate has increased, it's not additional benefits that, that we're thinking of, is that correct?
That's correct, that's just the rate indicated by the state.
Excellent, thank you. And then, you know, given this, these times, you, you guys have done a fantastic job putting, putting this together, not knowing all the pieces of the puzzle. Until, till June, when we're getting ready to adopt the final budget that we'll even know what sales tax collections are for, for the, these last few months during the, the height of the pandemic. So a good job putting that together. At, at this point, I'll open up to council members that have questions, either Ms. Olson, Mr. Fosley or Mr. Knutson. You can just unmute your line and I'll be able to see.
I had a question.
Yeah, council member Dylan.
I noticed the courthouse went, I thought it was around 3 million and now we're at 7 and a half million. Have we just, do we have any, anything associated with that?
Sure. The, the $3 million or 3.2, the original, I, I, I'm not sure what that was based on. I think it was more of a placeholder. What we did is spent $20,000 to do a report with an architect. And I apologize, I meant to include that, this information as part of the presentation. So I appreciate the question. But what we did is we hired Selberg Associates to do a needs assessment, space, courtrooms, what we need for today, what we need for build out. And not only a space assessment, but also what that did is provided us with a current construction cost estimate that we can be confident in to place in our budget. And the, the cost, that 7.5 million also, you know, you know, what, the construction costs are one thing, but that doesn't include design costs. And we don't really do vertical construction here, so we'd have to hire a construction manager as well. And those are usually 10% of the construction cost. So that inflated it a little bit as well. But the 3.2 million dollars was originally unrealistic in my mind.
Okay, I was, yeah, because I was wondering where we kind of picked that number from at the beginning too, especially with Mojave counties and theirs being like a lot more than that. So I was just curious, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Dylan for asking the question. That's one of, one of my two questions. The other one was, when do we actually expect to put a shovel in the ground to get started on that courthouse? You know, right now we're contracting with the county. There's not enough space, we're having to stretch out. Court cases, where a lot of the attorneys can't even take vacations because we have to have defendants have rights to speedy trials, all those kinds of things. And so it's something that is definitely a need, not a want, and a, and a critical need at this point. And, and we all know that, but when do we expect to actually put a shovel in the ground and start on the bill? That's a good question, I appreciate it, Vice Mayor. The, as presented in today's CIP, design starts, the earliest the design can start would be July of year two, which is fiscal year 21, 22. And then there's no construction dollars allocated until the following year, which would be July of 22, 23. So best case would be July of 22, 23.
Okay, and is that, obviously it doesn't make sense to put money into construction until we have the design. Because it takes time and, and it goes over the next fiscal year. Is there any way to move that forward? Is this just the timeline that it's taking to get this done? Or is it a dollar issue?
I don't know if Jess has any further information, but
Yeah, I can grab that one, appreciate that Greg and Vice Mayor Lane. It comes down to a, to a dollar issue. So we took a look at a, a project where we had earmarked 3.5 million dollars previously for that, that project in the past. We solicited an architect as Greg indicated and came back with a dollar figure that was much higher when you incorporate all the costs tied to that facility. Now we'll continue to look at all options and there might be other possibilities. But that 7.5 million right now represents what the, what the architect's estimate is for a 20,000 square foot facility on the city hall complex. Off of McCullough where city hall and police department and other services exist right now. But in the end, we take a look at, we, we fund the CIP at about 2.1, 2.2 million dollars per year based on construction activity within the Lake Havasu City. That equates to a fully funded CIP program. And then, and then we, we work backwards from the dollars that are available and fit projects in where we, where we can. We can make it a determination with regards to maneuvering projects back and forth or removing one project and then replacing with another. We can make a determination with, with funds, unencumbered funds that the city does have outside of the, of the budget stabilization reserve. So there's some opportunities that we do have and, and so seeking some, some council guidance on that. At the same time, we, we have to be physically, fiscally conservative and, and spend the dollars where we can wisely. And again, going into this budget where we sit right now and have these discussions right now. There's a whole lot of unknown. We don't even know what the sales tax revenues for last month were and we won't know that until, until June. So this is, you're seeing a very, very cautious a budget. And, and this is reflected in this project and throughout the, the budget. But I'm open for guidance and direction from council and hopefully that helps.
Now that, that answers the questions, I just wanted to make sure that information got put out there. The other question I had, if I may, is on the funding sources slide, it shows for fiscal year 21 through 25, the ADD at just under 25 million dollars. But that's also going to be going away. Now is that, the ADD is going away, correct? And so when that goes away, this 25, it actually looks like it's about 24 million dollars. Is that how much we're projecting that it's going to come up with until it goes away? Or how is that projected out? Because it shows through 21, 25.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Lane. What you're seeing, actually, we're going to have a whole lot more information for council as far as the, the ADD at the May 26th or the, I believe that's the date for the second meeting in May. Mr. Mark Reader will write us with the presentations and different options and what the IDP, what the IDP sun setting in 2023 or June or July 1st of 2023 at the end of fiscal year 2023. We have some options and, and what that looks like. Was it, is that a, is that a new district? And some of those options aren't the best, but we want to present those to the council and to the public, kind of see what thoughts are on that. And the other options are incorporating loss of those funds through a utility rate study, which is underway with the, the city right now. The dollars that you see within the budget that, that there indicate a fully funded IDP or the replacement of those funds. So we'll have to make some tough decisions if we go in a different direction. But right now, the conversations for the last, for many, many years with the, with the public has been that the city does not, the city is going to lose 5.5 million dollars that's generated off of property tax assessment through the irrigation and drainage district, which everybody sees on their property bill. Everybody's billed per acre for that, for that assessment. That those funds go directly into the, the projects and that Greg described in, in the water CIP. So water main replacements and a second water supply for the Lake Havasu City. Our water tank rehab also goes to pay for the ongoing, you know, requirements for equipment and personnel and those types of things. So for us to walk away and remove 5.5 billion dollars worth of funding for our water services is something that would be frankly devastating to, to Lake Havasu City and our ability to provide water services to, to our residents. So a very long-winded answer to your, to your question, Vice Mayor Lane. But the, the assumption is that, that the city will do something in terms of maintaining that same, same level of funding for, for our water services.
Thank you. And then just one last comment, and that is thank you to you and your staff for, for the hard work that you guys are doing, putting this together. I know it's very, very difficult for you to be able to tell us how we're going to fund things, what we need to do, when you don't even know how much money we're going to have. All we can do is hope for the best and plan for the worst. So thank you very much for, for the work that, that the whole staff is doing. It's truly appreciated. And for the public, they need to understand that if we do adopt a budget, as you and Jill both pointed out. We can adopt the budget and we have to go hope, you know, the budget will be our best case scenario. That doesn't mean we're going to be spending all those dollars. It just means that if things do pick up and we don't have the economic downturn that we're actually expecting. We'll be able to use the resources that we have, but we're not going to be spending resources that we don't have. So it's, it's plan for the best, expect the worst and move forward. So thank you very much to you and your staff for that. And that was the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mary Lane. And in for watching at home, the, the, with municipal budgeting, we have to have it budgeted if, if we're going to spend it. So that's why, Vice Mary Lane's comments and Mr. Knutson's comments, that we, we have to have those items in the budget. Plan B, once we understand what resources will be there. So. Councilmember Dylan. Yes.
I just had a question going back to the, to the courthouse. If we know the total project, we're thinking is about 7 and a half million. Do we have a breakdown of what, you know, what the design itself would be? You know, something we could get that started and then, you know, then figure out the construction, you know, phase two further. So do we have, I guess my question is, is do we have those numbers breaking down to kind of get an idea what the design cost is?
Yes, what, what I have is a, a short report from the architect that that identifies office space, bathroom needs, courtroom needs, file room, all of that. Space allocation has been determined per square foot and the per square foot average dollar amount that we've been seeing is applied to that. That's where I get, that's where I came up with the 7.5 million dollars, including design costs and construction management costs.
Well, I know because we said that the, we could in next year do the design and then the following year would possibly be construction. But do we have those separated, what if we did start on the physical design and getting the plans and get everything together? Do we have a cost on that, my, without the construction costs?
I've got $700,000 program for fiscal year 21, 22 for design.
Okay, 700,000, okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, council member Dylan, you, on page 18 of, of the projects book, we'll have it listed out by, by program here.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments from, from council or questions? Yes, council member Grove.
Yes, I have a question on the downtown catalyst project. Is that $2 million, is that just for the design?
Mayor Shi, my council member Lynn. What you have there is, we don't have a design. We've reached, we've been contacting the past about some conceptual ideas. But we've never had a plan that, that's come to the, to the city as of yet. So no, that, those dollars are basically set aside for a improvement to take place at that location. Utilizing the million dollars from the ABC that is held by the PD. And, and then with $430,000 for city dollars. Now, we could go in a couple of different directions with this, right? The way this project gets set up, we could wait for somebody from the private sector to approach the city and and come to an agreement. Sell out a third of that property and then uh, and then identify um, the city's obligation to improve the remaining space to uh, provide a social gathering. Element in the downtown. Uh, we could also go in a completely different direction. We could look at that property. And utilize these funds, the million dollar funds that we have from the award and do improvements to that existing property. And make it enhance what we have out there right now, which is a, a so, you know, social gathering location. So we see different events that take place out there. So we have that ability as well too. So um, the very, very short answer to your question, Councilmember Lynn, is this this number represents a whole lot of flexibility. And it's uh, and it's 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 a reaction to the conversations that uh, that uh, and the direction that. Cut staff received at the retreat back in um, back in February. And still open for more direction, more conversation, more discussion on what this looks like and and where we're going with it. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. I have another question on the courthouse. Um, I know we're talking about that we had the assessment done. Can you give me some more specific, like what the needs actually are? Because I'm I'm hearing space, but then I heard um, Vice Mayor Lane say something about court dates being moved back. Can you give me some more specifications of what those needs are?
Well, um, I don't know if the judge can chime in on this. Wh- what happened was when we hired that architect, we got together with the judge to talk about our our needs for today. As well as our needs for a build up population of ninety six thousand. And I don't have that uh, report in front of me right now. I'm sorry, but it. It it specifically, it has to do with the number of courthouses, number of office space and things like that. But maybe, maybe uh, Judge Kalali could help me out here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Sheehy, Councilmember Lynn. Um, you know, we have two things that we're looking at. First of all, long term, what are our needs going to be? And then short term, what are our needs right now and on space issues that we're having right now. Um, we only have access now to one courtroom per day, uh, which means that uh, we can only do so many things during the day. With that one courtroom. And so a a lot of it is just having the the courtroom space to be able to do. We need to do. And so if we can't, then we have to push places out a day or a week or a month, depending on on how busy we are. Um, you know, I I can tell you right now that what's happened with the coronavirus, uh, July, August, September, even into October. Even early January, we have no idea what we're going, because we don't have enough space to do the things that we need to do based on that. So. Um, that's that's kind of the space needs that we have just for courtroom purposes. We still have the the space needs we have for employee purposes also. And and files and and all those kind of things. Uh, did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Groot, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um. Uh, I I first of all, I wanted to say to um, Mr. Crossley, um, I appreciate what you've done with the. Public Boulevard paving replacement, moving the budget from thirty million dollars to one point two million dollars, I think would be very meaningful. For our community's budget in these uncertain times. So I I just wanted to uh, offer you my appreciation for that. Um, I I just basically have two questions. I'm not really sure which one to start on, but I think the both wind up in Mr. Crossley's uh. Courthouse to some extent. Um, and maybe another one, but. I I just gonna say with the courthouse piece, if I understand correctly, Mr. Crossley. That he's buying piece goes into next year's capital budget. I think i- if I remember correctly, it was something like three quarters of a million. Or anyways, the preparation for looking at construction, which has been pushed out to several years from now. Is i- am I understanding that correctly, Mr. Crossley?
As presented today, the courthouse uh, seven point five million dollars is spread over three years. The design uh, which is seven hundred thousand dollars in year two, fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Could take up as much a- as nine month, but nine months to accomplish. So that's nearly a year. When you consider bidding and the bidding process afterwards. So there's no construction money in the same year as the design. So it'll take a year to get the design accomplished. And then over the next two years is how the the construction and construction management money is programmed. So I, hopefully that answers your question, but it's 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 a three, it's proposed, the money is proposed to be spent over three years.
It does answer my question. I thank you. So not spending any money on that immediately, but it's certainly, you know, it's in the five-year plan. Um, and I think I heard you say that we would be considering working with Selberg and Associates on that. Did I hear that correctly?
Selberg and Associates was selected to do the the initial uh, needs assessment to get uh, to get those square footages. And a cost estimate that uh, we would be confident in enough to place in the budget. A selection for the, the the state regulates a a selection process for a project of this size. We'd have to do solicit for statements of qual- qualifications.
Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh, I know that uh, we've uh, had very good success and working with them in the past. In fact, that raises kind of a tie into another question. It's a project I don't see in here, uh, which I would like to lodge a little bit of. And that is, um, we know that in the past, the city council identified a need. That was already the the lands identified, Selberg did architectural drawings, we held community meetings and town halls. Uh, because there was some uh, decisions that, you know, people wanted to make about what would fit into the area even better. And the reason for that is pretty simple. Uh, and this happened probably ten years ago, something like that. Our current average for our EMS response in the city is over six minutes, has been this way for some number of years. And. Of course, the NFPA standards call for ninety percent of our EMS calls to be handled by qualified responders on site in four minutes less. And most cities have that as a goal. But because we're so stretched out and we've been growing, of course, it's nearly impossible for us to get that. Even though in excess of eight kind of our calls are EMS related or pre-hospital emergency care call. So knowing that that was gonna be the case, um, our our, the councils that preceded us, mayor councils that preceded us. Identified that made plans for designs, uh, went through all the work. Uh, and it hasn't come back and we've only grown since then. And I think the concern is that uh, people who live, you know, in particular and have a super hills. The Royals or the Villas or the Oncle up in the foothills. Um, and in South uh, Lake Havasu could be facing twelve, fourteen, fifteen minute response times. Cause we simply don't have sufficient uh, coverage because we've never gone forward with that particular project. I'll remind everybody that the reason that the NFPA calls for four minutes or less is after four minutes, if you're not breathing. You start to become brain dead. If we don't get to you in twelve or fifteen minutes and you haven't been breathing, chances are you're just not gonna be alive. And if you are alive, there's not gonna be enjoying Thanksgiving with your family anymore. You're gonna be. Out of it forever. So uh, that is kind of a life and death thing that uh, we really haven't addressed at all in here. And so I'm wondering, uh, how come we haven't discussed that in the five-year plan? But it's more important to have a courthouse.
Yeah, Councilmember Groot, uh, what the staff has done today and what uh, we're reviewing is the CIP based on the feedback that we provided staff. In our February planning session. And so they were taking direction from us. And so there was a very limited uh, conversation about Station Seven at that time. And and I believe Mr. Newton gave gave uh, uh, an address about, uh, you know, different efficiencies with uh, the the fire department. Uh, and operating it and with a new fire chief coming on board, uh, to give uh, that person that opportunity. Uh, to to look and evaluate uh, what makes uh, most sense today. A- as you indicated, that that uh, Station Seven conversation that you're bringing up. Is is twelve, fifteen years ago. Um, and so obviously the the Lake Havasu City of today is is a little bit different. But I don't know if Mr. Newton would like to to uh, take uh, that for a for a minute?
We have grown quite a bit in twelve or fifteen years. So it was a need that long ago and and now I'm just not seeing it anywhere. And that's. It's only a concern. It doesn't mean that we didn't discuss this. I I did raise this at that meeting, but my voice was one of few. I'm just saying it's a concern.
Uh, Mayor Shee, Councilmember Groot, certainly it's something that gets talked about and discussed. We had two studies that were done in that timeframe years ago. That one showed a need and and the other one um, at that time, um, did not to that same extent. Um, but we are, as you said, we've grown. We need to take a look at what our our station, the locations are, where we're at and how our operations um. Are are accomplished. We also need to take a look at uh, our EMS provider here in the community. Obviously, we have EMS uh, personnel on staff within the city, within the fire department. Um, but our our ambulance service, AMR, is something too that we've uh, is another way for us to approach and and uh. Do the best we can to decrease some of these response times. And we've had some discussions in previous years about, maybe we take a look at a uh, a study. And what that would look like from the city's perspective. If uh, if we uh, looked at that much closer and us providing that to be in that provider as the city service. But we need to have a better idea of if is that a cost to the city or a break even endeavor or generate a profit to then. Further fund uh, public safety o- operations. So all those conversations continue. Based on the feedback that I've received comprehensively from council, represents a a project for for fire facilities. And uh, that's the rebuild of Station Five. So as we look at that facility, it's in it's in pretty rough shape. So. Um, we look at a new Station Seven, rebuild the Station Five, and right now, ba- based on the conversations that uh, that have occurred. We would then identify Station Five as a more of an immediate need. Now you'll see, we just don't have money in the budget for the uh, rebuild of Station Five. You see a little bit of design dollars pushed out in year five. It's an earmark for us to take a close look at our future needs. But obviously open to a council direction. If consensus from council comes back and says, you know, uh, a fire station or um, another, another approach is is different than the needs of a. Courthouse, um, you know, staff's gonna provide a recommendation. And in the end, we'll take the guidance of the of the council. That how, does that help?
Well, you know, I would say it does help, Mr. City Manager. I certainly appreciate that. Um, and and then I guess we should also recognize that all those studies were done twelve to fifteen years ago and they. City council and the administration had already arrived at the conclusion that fire station should be built. And then they paid for the architectural designs and the engineering and all that's done and we have all that. Um, and and so then the only thing really fundamental that's changed is we added more population to further stress those response times. But we've exacerbated the situation. And I just wanted to point that out. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I do have another question. And if anybody wants to follow on to the fire station seven, I'll I'll leave it open. Cause I'm gonna go to a water question next.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Groot, uh, Councilmember Lynn does have a comment on fire station. Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, you know, I'd like to piggyback on what um, Councilmember Groot says, you know, and and of course, this would be, you know, the chief and the discussions with with him and the city manager. But to say that there's not a need for fire station seven over the need of of the remodel. I don't know. I guess that's an answer for, you know, that would be have to be given by the chief. But um, I'm just gonna give an example here and and. I didn't want to go here, but I live on the south side. And we had an example, uh, my mom um, passed out. This winter and it was a fourteen minute call time. And I live right in front of the other fire station. So there is an issue with call times and and we're on the south side. And I think there's a definite need for fire station seven. And I just wanted to add that. You know, is it, is it more important in the courthouse? I don't know. Is storage more important, space more important than people's lives? I don't know. But I I wanted to put it out there that I do think that it's something that we need to discuss. That's all I have.
Yeah, th- thank you for for those comments and and Councilmember Groot and Councilmember Lynn. Uh, I, if from my perspective, I think that we just uh, hired a new fire chief and I think we need to allow him the opportunity. Uh, to to review and and uh, determine what's best uh, best for the department through their his uh, discovery. Uh, and come back to us. But at this, at this time, it I don't think from a policy level that we need to be making that that uh, that push. And I would rather have it come from the fire department directly. I don't know if any other council members have any comments on on uh, issue or fire station issues?
I'll I will uh, chime in, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Vice Mary Lane.
Thank you. And and I do agree that there is um, a need. Uh, we are growing. We do uh, need to ensure that we have adequate personnel. I also agree with you that we have a new fire chief and we have to allow him to make his decisions. Uh, and you know, the job of this, the city manager and the staff is to juggle the amount of money that we have. And what is the most important and what what can we afford to do? And if there are more things that need to be done, um, than what we have resources for. Then we have to look for alternative resources. And is anybody willing to start that conversation of where those resources are going to come from? So things get more and more expensive. Uh, the population goes up and up. And uh, there are numerous needs across the city from water, wastewater, court, fire, police. Uh, redoing our roads. Um, there are people that want better roads. There's people that want more fire stations. There's all kinds of needs that are out there. And I agree that uh, public safety isn't, is uh, very, very important. But that doesn't mean that uh, we have to put everything else aside. When we have X amount of dollars. We can't overspend just because we have a need that uh, that somebody else wants. So it's all about juggling. Um, and that's what the city staff has been doing. And I think they're doing a good job with it. And I don't disagree that we do need additional resources. We just have to see uh, how we're going to fund those resources. And right now. Uh, with the uncertainty of the budget and we don't even know um, what we're going to have for this next year. Uh, it may be premature to have conversations of of building additional buildings other than uh, what we already have. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mary Lane. Do any other council members have any comments on on fire station issues? The only other comment I'll I'll offer on this is that, you know, this is pieces of a puzzle. And so fire station, about courthouse and fire station. Uh, five rebuild are are late holders uh, of a plan that are not in this next coming fiscal year. So I mean, it's our discussions and we can continue to have and further the discussion as uh, Chief Office uh, gets gets uh, more acquainted with. Uh, the department and the city and and the resources and can make recommendations to us. Councilmember Groot, you had a comment on water or a question?
I do, Mr. Mayor. But I thought I saw our public works director was gonna say something. Did you need to say something, sir?
No, happy to move on to your water question.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so um, I I was noticing, um, and you've probably got it programmed in a different way. Um, you could enlighten me, uh, that, you know, you you I didn't see where the um. Or how much you thought or anticipated it might cost uh, to do the servicing on the existing horizontal collector, otherwise known as the Rainy Well. Everybody refers to the Rainy Well, but that's really the horizontal collector well, where we get, you know, all of our water. I'm I'm sure that it's programmed in there. I just don't know where.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Groot. Yes, right now, we have a a contract with. The Jacobs Engineering Group to be doing this uh, exploratory well drilling for us, right? And provide recommendations to um, for locations regarding locations to build new wells. A different component of their current contract is to provide technical support to the city. Uh, through our evaluation of the Rainy Well, our existing horizontal collector well. So that report is is underway. It's still forthcoming. At this time, we're we're not exactly sure um, what it's going to take to repair. The laterals at the horizontal collector well. And it really can't happen until um, another year and a half. Because we still have to design and construct these two new wells and the conveyance pipeline to the treatment plant. So we're, we're not quite there yet. To to program for the maintenance. We still have to make sure we build the appropriate wells to have one hundred percent redundancy to turn that collector well off. For an extended period of time.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I'm going to uh, just assume that as we proceed in understanding the capacity of water pumping. From the verticals and uh, what what that means and being able to get that online, then at that point, we'll understand probably in the next year or two. Uh, where the budget out for reparation, the existing horizontal. Now, the other thing I had a question was, it's kind of related to that. Um, you know, I know that uh, Jacobs Engineering will be working with us uh, in, you know, the identification and the drilling. And we've done some exploratory drilling already and so forth. I I noticed that we have about a five million dollar budget. Plugged into this for the vertical rehabilitations, North Well Field. Um, and it it would be a roughly, it's just ballpark estimate. That's about one-third the money that we might need. Build the second Rainy Well. And I've always been curious, uh, if we've ruled out or ruled in the possibility of second horizontal collector well. And the reason I say that is pretty simple. Um, the reason. Um, the reason that we abandoned the North Well Field in the first place was that there was some amount of concern that we didn't want to, you know, in underground aquifer wind up in training volatile organic compounds, specifically perchlorothane, chlorothane, dichlorothane, dichlorothane, one two nitrates and hexabalum chromium, which are known to exist in the Kiowa Pond or the underground plume in the area proximal drilling sites or the North Well Field, as we refer to it. So it, my question would be, what kind of hydrological analysis do we have that shows how much time we are going to be able to uh, pump water, if in fact we even have enough capacity, take the North Well Field and use that to replace the existing capacity from the horizontal collector well? Uh, and if we do, how much time do we have before we potentially wind up in a risk situation where we could either be in training those chemicals into the water supply themselves, or are we abandoned the North Well Field in the first place? Or even potentially worse, those migrate into the lake?
I'm not sure that was just one question, Councilmember Groot, but I'll try to get through all of that uh, the best I can. Um, no, we have not abandoned the idea of a second horizontal collector well. That's actually why we worked with Arizona State Parks to get the right of entry to do that exploratory well drilling. Uh, so now we're, we we've done that that bore hole, and we're going to have that information to evaluate. It actually looks, according to Dr. Wilson, quite promising for a future horizontal collector well. Currently in the five year CIP, uh, there's no money allocated to the development of a well on State Parks, and we would have to get some sort of lease agreement or or some kind of an agreement to actually have a permanent facility there. The the right of entry they gave us was only for a twelve month period, so we had to really rush to get uh, get that work included in the in the uh, contract we had with Jacobs. So the the horizontal collector well at State Parks has always been a long term plan with that the city had for a second completely redundant backup water source, water supply uh, to the North Well Field. Uh, the North Well Field was not abandoned uh, because of anything having to do with the Kiowa Ponds. We actually have two uh, clean bills of health from DEQ regarding the Kiowa Ponds. Um, we do have the plume issue, which that data seems to change depending on who's presenting it. Um, so the the idea of the backup or or our North Well Field being in any type of jeopardy um, with contamination isn't a consideration right now for us. In the North Well Field is and always will be the backup. So at most, it would be a temporary source while we're doing maintenance on our existing collector well or our future collector well. So a- and actually, the four point nine million dollars, a significant portion of that is uh, carry forward from our existing contract. We only have a little bit, uh, only about three million program for the new work. I wanted to point that out, too. Uh, it's less than, less than five. So um, I may have lost track of a couple other questions you had in there, Mr. Groot. Uh, I don't know if you want anything uh, had anything to follow up with?
Oh, Mr. Crossley, I, you know what? I think what I'm hearing is, um, and it's good news, thank you, uh, that we do plan to move forward with a second horizontal collector well. It's going to take some time and it's going to take some budgeting. It's just not uh, presented in this particular budget, because we haven't had time to do that. I get that. That's cool. So the verticals essentially then become, even though it's going to temporarily be our backup to allow us to repair the first horizontal after we get the second horizontal well, and that'll be our third backup. And so I'm even happier now. But I just wanted to make sure that we did understand that there is some element of concern to use that for any indefinite period of time because of what we, what we believe we have in in lieu of the plume.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does any other council member have any additional questions that about what was presented today? Yeah, um, Mr. Crossley, on the uh, uh, projects book, there's timelines that are listed on here. Uh, the the only one that jumps out is the McCullough Boulevard pavement project. It has a s- an anticipated start date of January of twenty one, uh, going through the spring season where where that the Boulevard is pretty busy with uh, with events and stuff. Is that timing flexible?
Absolutely. Originally, Mayor, we had a plan to get in there immediately upon approval of the uh, twenty twenty one budget and do it in July. However, uh, with the uncertainty with the revenue projections, it was arbitrarily moved to January, because that's what the Plan B uh, requirements are. Obviously, we can't pave then, uh, but if the money's available in January, we could um, schedule around, uh, you know, the events and things like that. So ob- obviously very flexible, yes.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And then the only other thing that we talked about in February that I didn't see here, and I might have heard that it was going to be an operational thing, was the um, uh, the the truck for um, for the fire department, uh, ARF. No, no, not the ARF. I'm sorry. The uh, crit is what stuck in my mind. But the uh, unit that firefighters, uh, that the volunteers go out and and rehab our fire. Cert, sorry. Yes, thank you. On the cert vehicle we talked about, was that going to be an operational discussion at our next budget hearing, or is that a a capital improvement?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Sheehan. Yeah, so you'll see uh, uh, in the operational budget on May twenty sixth or two weeks from today, we'll talk about the operational budget. So the request for the cert vehicle and as well as other vehicles for throughout the city public works, public safety uh, will be included to a certain extent with dollars that are available in in that budget. So I think tentatively, as it sits today, right now, um, that is listed as a Plan B project. I think to the tune of ninety thousand dollars, which is less than what they asked for, but um, that that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to thank the mayor for raising the cert vehicle. I'd forgotten. That's good.
Right. Are there any other comments for from council to to staff or questions? I I appreciate the the dialogue back and forth. I think it it was very productive. Again, for those that are are viewing this now, uh, the discussion we're having today is the the first uh, step of a two step process. So we're talking about the the CIP or the capital improvement uh, projects. And in a a few weeks, we'll talk about the operational pieces, uh, and you'll see the the two pieces come together. So it it may appear to to you at home, uh, that we're working in vacuums, but really, we're working in a a very progressive step uh, process. So it'll start coming together and and we'll start seeing all of the pieces um, in our June meetings as as the uh, budget process continues. So uh, thank you for for viewing and being a part of that. Uh, without any further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I say one thing real quick, Mr. Mayor? Uh, I keep I keep on saying May twenty sixth, and I want to correct myself. It's a May twenty first is the is the next step budget work session. So, thank you.
Excellent. And I actually just forgot this is a public hearing as well. So I do need to open it up, uh, to comments for from the public. Um, again, because uh, we're doing this through technological means, uh, in response to the COVID pandemic. Uh, we were accepting feedback from uh, citizens uh, through email to cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. And on this particular item, we did not receive any any uh, public comment to read into the record. So with that being said, I'll close the public hearing uh, portion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, I just wanted to make a very short comment. Um, I think that the, uh, I just want to, again, like everyone else has done, is applaud the staff for the work they've done. It's very difficult under these circumstances um, to do um, the kind of job they have, knowing um, how difficult it is, not knowing exactly what's going to happen. There are so many things in our city um, that we would all like to have. We would like to have, um, you know, the the fire departments that, you know, obviously, lives of our um, of our constituents and and our citizens is so crucial. And also, even though it's not, you know, life or death, the courts, the streets, the everything that we want to have. And I know that under the circumstances, um, you know, you just, you have to see what we make and see what we can spend. I know that it's a juggling act, and everyone is doing the very best they can do. And I I trust that always, um, the council will look at, you know, lives first. Lives matter, obviously. But there's also, we have to remember that our citizens, even though they want all of these things, they do not want to pay more or do not are unable to afford more. Um, so it is very difficult to pick which is the most important thing for all of our citizens. And so I just want to applaud them. I want to thank you all for the for the hard work and and just say I know that you're doing the very, very best that you can at this time. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember McCoy. And Vice Mary Lane, did you have a comment?
I do not, sir.
All right.
Waiting for you to wait for the motion that I was going to give it.
All right. And we'll we'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for for attending, and we'll see you all soon. Be well and be kind.
Thank you.